This meeting for Tuesday, July 9th. And I'm going to confess that I came home last night from being away for a week and therefore have no announcements, except sort of to say that there are -- some people have been following the B-Space Committee's meetings. And originally, it was expected that B-Space would have concluded its work at the end of June. And in fact, it is not concluded, and B-Space meetings will be continuing, starting on next Monday, and carrying on through the end of July, and possibly meeting a couple of times in August. So just for people who are following that, are there announcements from members of the Board? Yes, Selectman Daley?
I just want to mention that our Committee on Diversity, Equal Employment, and Affirmative Action is meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 downstairs. And we've had some interesting meetings so far, and I hope this one will be another.
Okay. Any other announcements from Board members? Then we will move on to our public comment. We have two individuals signed up for this evening. You want to take draw straws, or do we get to pick and choose? Or would one of you like to come forward first? Ms. Connors?
Good evening. I'm Patricia Connors, and I would like to...
Just briefly, three minutes, and we do not debate. We just listen.
Okay. Yes, I would like to offer some observations regarding appointments to the Human Relations Youth Resources Board. One, Brookline faces challenges with the level of representation of people of color in its town workforce, particularly at the management level. Two, the town of Brookline needs to increase its diversity in its workforce. Three, the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, whether you call its job creating affirmative action policy or affirmative action guidelines, is mandated by Town By-Law to play a significant role in assuring fair representation of people of color in the town's workforce. Four, Town By-Law 3.14 requires the Selectmen to appoint 15 citizens of the town to be members of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. Five, the Commission currently has 10 members and five vacancies. A quorum is eight. Since January 2013, the Commission has had a quorum only once. Its next meeting is not scheduled until September 18th, which means that within nine months this year, it will have had a quorum only once. Six, a question exists as to whether this Board is meeting its obligation under Town By-Law 3.14 to appoint 15 members to the Commission. Seven, in addition, it can be argued that this Board's refraining from appointing members to the Commission, reducing the likelihood that the Commission can attain a quorum, is thereby, for all intents and purposes, disabling the Commission. At the June 19th meeting of the Selectmen's Committee on Diversity, EEO, and Affirmative Action, member Attorney Grace Lee delivered an incisive presentation on encouraging diversity in hiring. She stressed the need for leadership to commit to diversity philosophically and financially, not just in hiring, but in work culture, policies, and advancement. The current vacancies on the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission offer this Board an opportunity to embrace and expand Attorney Lee's philosophy from the town workforce to town appointments to its Boards and Commissions. And what better commission with which to apply this philosophy than a commission enacted on the very principle of ensuring equal opportunities for people of color? My understanding is that three people of color have applied. I personally know two. Arthur Conquest is a longtime resident, town meeting member, and community activist whose two adult children graduated from Brookline High School. He's devoted time and energy to numerous civic matters such as the Brookline Adult and Community Education Program, the Town Meeting Members Association, and the Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration Committee. An African-American, Mr. Conquest, is passionate about matters of race and commits enormous energy to improving the everyday life of people of color in this community. Another candidate, Cruz Sinabria, an Hispanic, is a veteran who was awarded the Purple Heart for his military service with the Marines in Vietnam. His education includes an advanced degree in education, and he has taught in the Boston Public Schools for several years, most recently in an elementary school in Roxbury. He works with children and parents of color on a daily basis. Both Mr. Conquest and Mr. Sinabria have much to contribute to the mission of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. I urge you to take Attorney Grace Lee's advice to heart and commit to diversity, not just in hiring, but in your appointments as well. I urge you to appoint Arthur Conquest and Cruz Sinabria to the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission to, one, increase its diversity; two, help fulfill your appointment responsibilities; and, three, enable the Commission to function as an essential and valued body of our town government. Thank you.
Ms. Vanderzeil?
I'm Cornelia Vanderzeil, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15. I'd like to continue this discussion of the vacancies on the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and its Diversity Committee. Ms. Connors has already gone over some of the salient points, but having only 10 members available for meetings makes it virtually impossible to conduct any business of the Commission, as she stated. And I know as well that there are three town -- excuse me, town members who have applied for this position. Two are black and one is Latino, and they've expressed an interest in and have applied for these vacant positions. And they still wait to hear from you after many months of applying. In addition, I've been struck with the lack of diversity on both these Commission and the -- the Commission and the Diversity Committee, which does not reflect the diversity of our town, by which I mean diversity in racial and ethnic composition. Much as we would like to believe that we live in a colorblind and post-racial society, the fact is, we do not. Prior to our town meeting, you, as the Board of Selectmen, convened a committee to study the issues, I think that potentially that were raised by Articles 9 and 10 at the last town meeting, specifically 10. I may not have this exactly right, but I don't think that's really crucial. This committee also reflects the general lack of diversity of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. As you know, of course, Town Meeting approved Article 9, which replaced the Director of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission with professional administrative staff, as it's -- and there's a little more to it that's quoted in the article, "to support the work of the Commission." Nowhere is there any mention that the work of the Commission will not continue. Therefore, I find it curious that the vacancies on the Commission have not been filled. The lack of adequate membership, of course, hobbles this Commission and makes it impossible to do its work. Even if the Commission were to be abolished in the future, there's no excuse for disabling it now. We, as a town, need to support a strong and independent Commission so that we can deal with any issues of discrimination in town, whether it be discrimination against citizens, employees, visitors, or businesses. If you feel I've made any errors in stating the facts, please try to concentrate on the issue of substance and intent here. Please consider immediately filling the vacancies of the Commission with the citizens who have volunteered their services and actively find others to fill any remaining vacancies. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to comment on anything you said. I just want to clarify that a quorum is of the membership, and if there are 10 members, six members constitute a quorum. That's a fact. That's all.
Yes, that's not what Town Council has said.
Oh, really?
It's my understanding.
Moving on. We have miscellaneous items. Oh, sorry, the minutes from June 26th. Are there any corrections or additions to the June 26 minutes?
I have none.
Uh-huh. We have a record?
I did not have any either, and now Selectman Baker isn't here.
How about that? That's right. All right. Well, we could approve them as amended, just in case they come from -- we get some from Selectman Baker.
I think we should just approve them. He's not here.
All right. I move that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, June 26th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we'll move to the miscellaneous items. And the first one is a grant application. Chief, would you like to come forward and tell us about it?
Once again, Brookline had the opportunity -- Brookline Police had the opportunity to apply for a grant under the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program. This is, I think, the 50th in succession that we've been able to apply for it. It's a regional grant with us, and right now, there's four other members, three other members of the Norfolk County contingents, Brookline, Quincy, Wamif, and Randolph, who all can apply if they want to. We have applied. We have signed our MOUs. The total amount that we have been awarded as a group is $70,939. Of that amount, we have -- each get a certain percentage based on crime rate in our population. Brookline has once again chosen to be the lead applicant. We'll be administering the grant. I will be the fiduciary for it. With that, we get 10% of the $70,000 plus. So our total that we have -- we will receive from under this grant is $18,050.50, if the Board chooses to let us to go and accept it. It would be our intent to use it for improving our technology within the department.
And just for the record, I believe that we've had this grant previously for a number of years. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've been using it for technology?
We've been using it for technology, and one year, we used it for overtime for special projects.
Ah, right. Okay. Questions? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, I'm happy that you've -- are applying for this again. I just wondered, I noticed it says court programs and prevention, and we participate in that roundtable at the Court, the Brookline Court, to sort of do preventative work with young people, I think primarily?
Yes, we do. And we receive funding for that under the Shannon Grant.
Okay.
Which we edit -- we partnered with Boston Police, and we have been receiving that for the past four or five years as well.
Well, I just want to say, I think that preventative stuff is very important, and I know, you know, our crime statistics have looked good in recent years, and I think that the emphasis on preventative work is probably part of that.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief?
No questions.
All right. Then I move that -- whoops, I lost my piece of paper. Sorry, folks. I move that we authorize the Police Department to submit a grant application for the 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. Assuming it is successful, it would be $18,050.50. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Next is the question of approving leases for classroom space. And I'm wondering if we have Associate Town Council to talk to us about that?
Well, I think we discussed...
We've approved it, right.
In executive session, that we would approve it, subject to some -- one change
Language.
That we asked for, and final review of the language by Selectman Goldstein.
So we'll reschedule this.
Well, I'm suggesting we go ahead and vote it, subject to that final approval of the language, just in case they need to move forward on it.
Do you want to move it as approving the leases with Temple Imeth and Temple Ohabai Shalom?
Yeah.
Subject to final review by Selectman Goldstein? And the language changes that have been requested by the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And just so that everybody understands, this is to provide additional classroom space for preschool students who can no longer be accommodated in our kindergarten through eighth-grade schools. Next is the town's FY '14 to '18 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Ms. Bullock? And Ms. Price? Did I not see Ms. Price?
She had to leave.
Oh.
I'm sorry to hear, tell you that. I am here to request that the Board of Selectmen certify the town's Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice in order to comply with HUD regulations regarding governing our home and CDBG funding. The Department of Planning and Community Development updates and produces this document every five years, and it was last updated and approved by the Board of Selectmen in Basically, the document is very lengthy. You have copies. It's -- it covers a lot of issues. Primarily focused, you know, our work is primarily focused on affordability, as you know, in the Housing Division. While affordability continues to be a major obstacle for many people seeking to live here in Brookline, the purpose of this report is to identify barriers beyond affordability that limit housing choices for persons of protected classes. Briefly, you know, obstacles to fair housing affect choices regard -- they're defined as actions, omissions, and decisions taken because of race, color, religion, sex, disability, family status, national origin, or sexual preference that restrict the availability of housing choice for people here in Brookline or other parts of the state or the country. Massachusetts law also makes it illegal to discriminate based on age, sexual orientation, marital status, military and veteran status, ancestry, genetics, and source of income, including Section 8. This report lays out various actions that various town departments undertake to overcome barriers and make Brookline a more welcoming place for all. Some of the actions are things that we're currently doing across departments, including our department, and some represent new initiatives. This document should be seen as a living document. It, once certified, it will be posted on the town's website. It can be changed at any time. It's a guide to talk to various departments about how we can approach the issues of fair housing. We report on an annual basis to HUD about things that we're working on regarding fair housing, in addition to all the other things that we report on under our home and CDBG grants through both our Annual Action Plan and our CAPR. And I'm happy to provide more detail now or at a later date, or answer any questions that you may have about this.
Well, I would like to say that I was very impressed at the thoroughness of the work, and I have a complaint, and that is that at least one chart is so tiny that I can't read it.
Okay, I can change that.
And, well, you know, I think it's a sort of general comment, maybe just for the members of the Board. I would love to see the Affordable Units Map at a scale where I could actually understand it.
I understand, and it's very hard to put that...
The inventory list is absolutely unreadable by my eyes. So there's some wonderful, interesting things here, some distribution of income maps and other things that -- I'm only commenting on it because I think it's very important for us to know these things.
Okay.
So I don't know whether there's a way of putting them up in 11 by 14 or something.
I'll see if I can change it in the report, or, just so you know, those things are also on the web already, but I -- but I will see if I can make those. In past reports, I've made them into 11 by 17s that can be pulled out. It's hard to do if you want to provide information electronically to people.
I totally agree. And I'm sorry, maybe it's the age of my eyes that's leading me to make this comment.
No, it's...
And the other thing that I really appreciate and hope that we'll be able to take advantage of is the collaboration between West Metro Home and the MBHP and other very strong affordable housing advocates who participated in helping to collect data. And I just think that was a very important partnership, and I hope that we'll continue to take advantage of it.
MIPC is just completing a fair housing and equity assessment for the region, and I think it's really important for us to be involved in that.
Right.
Because it's a regional issue, it's something that's going to need to be addressed regionally.
Right.
And I think they have a lot of good data that we can use as we think about Brookline.
Okay. And then maybe after you hear some other questions, we could talk a little bit about some of the follow-up recommendations. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, no, so I noticed on your sort of conclusion section where our percentage of non-white homeowners is 16.6%, which is similar to Boston, Cambridge, and yet we're low on African-Americans and Hispanics and way high on Asians.
Asians, right.
And I understand sometimes when you have people whose maybe English isn't their first language, they tend to congregate in communities, so you'll have, you know, communities that have a lot of Brazilians, say, or Asians perhaps in our case, from, I don't know if they're from similar locations. But do we know anything about why the African-American number is low in Brookline? Is it anything -- is it -- was there any evidence of discrimination? Or is it simply the price point being too high in Brookline for many people?
I think it's a combination. We don't have specific data to Brookline. We tend -- what I tried to do in this report was talk about a study that Newton did in 2005 and 2006, where they actually did testing in the community, and they did find -- and since we are very similar in composition to Newton...
Yeah, I don't know whether I buy that, that we're that similar to Newton, but I think we're much more diverse than...
Well, I don't -- I would argue that we're not that dissimilar.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's put it that way.
Okay.
They did find discrimination, and I think regional trends suggest that discrimination exists in the market, in the private market. There's no question.
So...
But in terms of answering your question, I mean, I think it also goes to the history of segregation in the region, and since, you know, the Great White Flight from the inner city, et cetera, I mean, patterns of segregation that exist in greater Boston continue. And so I think the question is, how do those get broken down? And if I could answer that question easily, Selectman Daley, I would, but I think it's a really complicated question.
Well, if we participate in the MIPC thing, could we get some actual Brookline-specific data out of that? Or what would we have to do to get some Brookline data?
It depends on what kind of data you're looking for. There is a lot of data in that report on Brookline.
You mean on specifically on discrimination in Brookline?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we would have to do testing in Brookline. And that, again, I have explored that in the past. We could do testing here. We could do an RFP and contract out with a center -- with a group like the Fair Housing Center of Greater Boston to do testing. We have actually been told in the past by the Fair Housing Center of Greater Boston that it's not something that they necessarily recommend spending a lot of money on. There's two points of doing testing. One, to prove that there's discrimination in the community, and I would argue that we should assume there is, because there is regionally, there is in other surrounding communities. Why is Brookline any different? Or you could test to target specific landlords, and I'm not sure that the town wants to take that as a goal, to target and sort of punitive response to testing. So it's hard to get specific data on Brookline unless you do testing around housing discrimination.
I don't think I saw it in here, but do we have the data on our own Housing Authority buildings?
Yes, it's in there.
Oh, it is?
It's under -- there's a...
Page D6 -- it's 61. Page 61.
And actually, they wrote -- they wrote that collaboratively with me, so it's up to date.
One of the things that I noticed was that we're having a hard time placing Section 8s.
Yes, because of the price point.
I think the price point is probably the significant factor there, and I don't know whether the BHA keeps statistics on the characteristics of the holders of Section 8s, but it'd be kind of helpful to know if the ones that don't get placed here are minorities as opposed to the ones that do get placed here.
I could find out. I don't know the answer to that.
That strikes me as a very helpful possible -- I mean, it's pretty random, I would think. So I'd be curious to know whether you could find out about that.
I would say that the majority of people that are able to utilize Section 8s in Brookline at this point, because of the maximum amount that a Section 8 will pay, tend to be people needing smaller units, such as single persons.
Right.
Or people that are able to utilize those Section 8s in subsidized housing, which is a limited number of opportunities. It's just a problem when the market rent, again, I looked at it again this spring, and I almost started crying.
Yeah.
You know, for a two-bedroom is $2,400 to $2,800 for a two-bedroom, and that's considered family housing in this community.
Right.
And a Section 8 only pays, I believe, I can't remember off the top of my head, I should know this, but I think it's like $1,600 or $1,700.
Right.
So that's a huge disconnect.
Right.
But I think, you know, I talked to Patrick Dober about this, and, you know, they continue to do outreach to landlords to try to get private landlords to take, you know, and to -- and I think it's important for us to continue to remind landlords that, because there are some units that do fit that, that they must take them.
Right.
If they don't, then it's discrimination.
Right.
So I see our role as assisting people, if they believe they've been discriminated against, to get help through MCAD or the Fair Housing Center of Greater Boston.
Right.
And we do make those referrals from time to time, but we need more education as well, more consistent education.
I should say, since I've now found the right chart, that the Housing Authority numbers are quite good, actually.
Yeah. Yes, in terms of racial diversity?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a two-part question. So what should we be doing to further the cause of diversity in housing in Brookline and related, due to the decrease in our CDBG funds in this fiscal year?
Well, we're not decreasing this year.
No, no, this year, fortunately, but it's been going down. You're right, it's trending down.
In the up -- next coming year, or the anticipated funds.
We haven't given up yet.
What do we expect that we won't be doing things that we have been doing? Will there be any direct effect?
Hmm, that's a good question. Well, the whole first section of the -- I won't run through it, but runs, it talks about obstacles, and it talks about things that we are either doing and need to continue doing, or that we can do in the future. And actually, we've started working on a very draft initial work plan that we want to talk with different departments about. So for instance, the Commission on Disabilities, we see them as playing a very specific role. So the kinds of things that we're talking about doing very specifically are doing more regular training for both staff as well as key stakeholders. We've done it in the past, and then we've stopped doing it. So we need to be more consistent. So we need to have more, maybe, you know, say, okay, we're going to do this two times a year. We're going to have one for property owners, and we're going to have one for town staff and agencies, or we're going to have one for the general public, you know, that kind of thing. We also need to be, I think, as a town, more consistent about Promoting Fair Housing Month, which is in April. We haven't been consistent about it. I say this criticizing the housing staff, but I mean, you know, I think we could be better as a team across departments. I really want to see us working with MIPC on their Fair Housing and Equity Assessment. I think they're going to come out with some really great data that's going to be very helpful to us to understand these issues in a deeper way. And so that's one thing. One of the specific things that came up as I was doing this research is that one of the biggest, the largest number of complaints at MCAD, as well as those that have been resolved, have to do with against persons with disabilities. So one of the things that I feel like we could really do is more education around what is reasonable accommodation, and what is reasonable modification, and what are landlords' responsibilities to making sure they meet those? Because part of the problem is people with disabilities go, they don't understand their rights, the landlords don't understand what they're obligated to do. So we need to do more training on that. I talked to the Building Department, Mike Yanovich, and we agreed that probably between the Planning Department and the Building Department, there needs to be more training around fair housing disability, accessibility issues, I'm sorry, and ADA, both fair housing as well as ADA requirements, just so that everybody's up to speed. It's really complicated. There's various sets of laws, and it's something that I think we could, both departments could really use some help on. I talked to the Health Department about doing either, probably like every other year, training for homeowners on lead paint. Part of the problem that happens is that people, families with children get turned away from renting because landlords are scared about lead paint issues, because they don't understand what their obligations are, and they don't understand how to undertake these things, let alone have the financing to do it. Our department helps access state programs, but we don't have a lot of people taking advantage of those, partially because of the income disconnect. But I think that's one thing. But I think that's one thing. And then there's other things, but one last thing is I think that we need to think creatively as a group, and I think this is a much bigger issue than just our department, about how we serve the population with limited English proficiency, which is, according to the census data, about 10% of Brookline. So those are the things that we could do. What can we not do in terms of CDBG?
Before you go to that, Proctor, I hope when we hire our new Director of Planning and Community Development, that one of your first encounters with that individual will be to advise them of those things that we just talked about.
Thank you, yes, I hope so too. I would, I think it'd be great to see more energy on this issue. I think Brookline is such a unique place and wants to see diversity, but I think there's some very concrete things that we could be doing to help that along.
Tell me about the CDBG and anticipated impacts.
I don't know the answer to that question, except for that, you know, one of the main ways that we, I mean, our affordable housing programs have really, I mean, they consistently increase minority homeownership opportunities in this town. I mean, we just looked at all the, you know, Olmsted Hill had a 79% minority participation rate of homebuyers, you know, the last, since 2008, over 50% of our ownership units have been purchased by, you know, households of color. So with, we don't have more, the less money we have, the less opportunity we have to build more units. That's a very concrete way that I think, I mean, and then there's staffing issues. If our staff is, you know, shrunken or smaller, we'll have less capacity to do trainings and public education events, et cetera, so.
Thank you for a very concrete answer, by the way.
Yes, Selectman Wyszynski?
I'll just make a comment that this is a great report.
Thank you.
And I think there are a lot of synergies between this report and the report recently released by the Brookline community.
Oh, yes, Understanding Brookline.
Yes.
Yes, we used a lot of the data. I did, I used a lot of the data.
So between the two reports, you can get a very good picture of what's happening.
Absolutely, good for you to point that out, you're right. Thank you. Any other comments? So you would like us to, we need to submit this. Submit this, do we approve it and?
Certify it.
Certify it.
There's a last page on the, in the actual thing, states, it's some language regarding certifying. And again, I just want to iterate that this really isn't like a report that's going to go on, you know, it's a, it's a living document, something that can be changed every single year, if we have capacity to do that, or worked on and changed. It's just an opportunity for us to take a hard look at these issues, so.
All right, I think I have a motion here. I move that we hereby certify that this document, as presented, along with the actions being undertaken by the town on an ongoing basis, represents the fulfillment of the statement, which is in quotes from the CDBG program, that the jurisdiction will affirmatively further fair housing, which means that it will conduct an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice within the jurisdiction, take appropriate actions to overcome the effects of any impediments identified through that analysis, and maintain records reflecting that analysis and actions in this regard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I was just trying to show her the language. Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Price did reappear in the back. Thank you for your contributions. Next, we have a change order at a fire station, is there a building?
I don't see one here yet.
Are they having a commission meeting?
That's E, F, E and F.
All right, let's go.
Yeah, I had a question about this, is this, is this a fire station?
Yes.
It's a fire station work, and then there's unified.
It must have a slate roof, because they're looking for a snow rail?
Yeah, it could be.
Or copper downspouts.
Yeah.
Nothing but the best over at Fire Station Number Seven.
Well, it's how it was built. And we only do this every 100 years, think of it, if we did it every 20 years, it would cost more.
I bet we've redone those downspouts and.
Well, we're going to hold these for a moment, and then we can go to the GH and I?
J.
And J. Temporary licenses. And I will just read them off, is there any, any one of these items that anyone would like to hold?
Nope.
Okay, actually, here's an announcement, because part of what we're doing is approving licensing for the US Amateur Golf Event, which will be at the Country Club in August from the 9th through the 18th. Okay, I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Boston University in connection with a reception on July 27th. Also, a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Country Club from August 9th through 18th between, sorry, for the US Amateur Tour Golf Event. I move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages non-sale at the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for an event on July 26th, August 24th, and August 24th. And finally, I move that we grant a wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with events to be held on August 10th and August 17th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
I don't see any Recreation Department person in our midst. Well, I promised, yeah, right.
Five minutes early for interviews, five minutes early for interviews, too.
Yeah, we are. You know, we may just take a five-minute break. I apologize to everyone, we require some staff members who are in other.
Could Mr. Kleckner do the Health and Human Services?
I could, I could, sure.
Sure.
Well, I think those, both of those, well, the Human Services Specialist is.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, would you announce, would you announce which agenda item we're talking about?
Okay, all right, let me say, we are, we skipped a couple of miscellaneous items and moved to items on the main calendar. So what we're holding are items E and F with regard to Building Department matters, and we moved to the main calendar, and now we are looking at Item 8, Health and Human Services Personnel. And I was about to say we might hold because the, Dr. Balsam is in another meeting, and, but I think Selectman Daley's made a useful suggestion, which is Mr. Kleckner could actually handle that for us, and maybe even the Recreation Department, and then maybe we can do interviews. Okay, whoops.
They're on their way up.
Ah, all right. So shall we just sit and sing and dance?
Well, you didn't.
I wanted to do number 12, Fall Town Meeting.
Oh, right, let's do Fall Town Meeting. Straightforward dot controversial, and there is a document with a calendar at the back of your packet. The calendar for the Fall Town Meeting would include posting notices for the opening of the warrant on July 25th, warrant opening on August 8th, closing warrant on September 5th, which is the Thursday after Labor Day, I guess, and scheduling the Fall Town Meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, and presumably to be continued on, we do consecutive nights in the fall, so it'd be the 19th, the 20th, and the 21st, right?
Right.
I don't have, let me find November in here to make sure.
No, that's true.
All right, so theoretically, we would begin on the 19th and reserve Wednesday, the 20th, and Thursday, the 21st, which is the week before Thanksgiving, I hope? Okay. All right, so are there any comments or questions from board members about the proposed calendar for the Fall Town Meeting? Yes, Selectman Wyszynski?
The only comment I'll make is one of my pet peeves every year, that the warrant closes so soon after Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yet I realize there's nothing we can do about it, given the way the bylaws are.
Well, if we want to have town meeting on the 19th of November, which is backwards from which we count.
I understand.
Okay.
I'm just expressing my pet peeve.
And I totally agree with you. All right.
Maybe sometime we should take a look at that bylaw.
Maybe we should, maybe we should.
Because it is hard, I think, for people to get things in right after Labor Day, or before Labor Day sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we, are we ready to take a vote on this? If we are, I will move that we approve the calendar for the Fall Special Town Meeting with the opening of the warrant on Thursday, August 8th, closing of the warrant on Thursday, September 5th, and opening date of the town meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, holding Wednesday, the 20th, and Thursday, the 21st as subsequent town meeting dates. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, I believe we now can go to the Recreation Department item, Ms. Paradies.
Good evening, Lisa Paradies, Recreation Director. I'm here to get authorization for hire for three positions this evening. The first is, I'm not sure what order they're on on the calendar, but I'll hope.
Sewell is.
Sorry, okay, great.
Sewell, then Clerk Typist, then Custodian.
Great. So the Lead Teacher at Sewell will be a 30-hour position. This position will be similar to another position that we have there, it'll be a school year position, so it will run from, it'll be active actually from September until June, and it is a revolving fund budgeted position.
And new because you're adding a class?
Yes, we've added, we actually added a classroom last year and utilized part-time personnel to offset the care in that classroom, and this option through a cost-benefit analysis is a better and more cost-effective way of managing that classroom.
Okay, questions for Ms. Paradies?
I do have a question. So this is a new position for Sewell, so are we increasing the enrollment there?
We have, yes, we are increasing the enrollment.
Over the last year.
Yes.
Along with everybody else.
Yeah.
How many, how many more students are we going to?
We were licensed for 54 children, and we are now licensed, we're actually licensed for more, but now we have the capacity to take 76 children, so an additional 22 children.
All right, and do we have the space for?
Yes.
For increasing that enrollment?
Yep, we actually have already done that, so we have renovated the third floor of the Sewell Center, and that is a functioning classroom as we speak.
And this is BEEP, or is this, this is not BEEP?
No, we're separate, we're standalone.
Recreation.
These children are younger than BEEP?
No, they overlap with BEEP, but we are a licensed childcare center, so we have children year-round, unlike BEEP, that is a school-year program, and we are open from 8 to 6, Monday through Friday, and we have, we enroll children from 12 months through five years, just before kindergarten. So the age group that overlaps is actually the preschool age group, which is 2.9 to 5.
And as I understand it, BEEP has an educational curriculum, but also has extended days, so they look alike kinds of.
But I think BEEP has a limited enrollment.
Yeah, it does, it does.
I don't think they take everybody, so there's certainly people looking for other alternatives.
Okay, I mean, I understand that, seems we have two, two programs running.
They're different.
Well, there's some differences, but there's obviously some similarities too, and it's okay, more than, more than we need to discuss at the moment, but. Second question, Lisa, you may know that we're, the town is on a concerted effort now to increase diversity in our workforce, and can you tell me, you can talk about this with respect to this Sewell Rec Center position and other positions that you're going to talk to us about too, what are we doing to make sure that we are soliciting applications from the most diverse workforce possible?
So naturally, we're following the lead of the HR Department in how they're going about their expanded advertisement in different publications, so they're really on the ball with that, and we feel really comfortable about how they're advertising. With the Sewell position in particular, though, I have to say that that center itself and that division of recreation is very diverse in its ethnicity and race, it's a phenomenal place, and we have some incredible teachers there, and many, many teachers of color there. And we expect that there will be more of the same.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you have another position, actually, two more, I guess, go ahead.
So this is a Senior Clerk Typist, this is an upgrade of a position that's currently there, it's actually renaming it into an upgraded position. This is to function, it has a few more hours involved in it, so it went from a 27-hour part-time position to a 30-hour part-time position, and it is, it's a C4 position, and again, this is a revolving fund funded position.
So this one's not going to be advertised, you're, the current incumbent is going to be upgraded, is that?
This will be, no, this will, both of, this will be advertised, but it will be internally posted first.
Okay. All right, and your Custodian?
And the Custodian position is a brand-new position. We actually have, in this situation as well, we did an extensive cost-benefit analysis and analyzed really what we were getting out of the contracted services that the town receives right now, and we really were dissatisfied with some of our facilities. So we've downscaled the contracted services that we're getting from the current service, which is CleanCo, and opted to hire a 40-hour-week position so that that position would help out to maintain and be a second custodian to all of our buildings.
Is this, this position is funded, including benefits out of the revolving fund?
All of the positions out of the revolving fund are, yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, other questions? Okay, then I move that we authorize filling the following vacancies in the Health and Human Services Department, a, sorry, I misspoke, ignore what I just said, filling the vacancies in the Recreation Department, Lead Teacher at the Sewell Recreation Center, a Senior Clerk Typist, and a Building Custodian. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Ms. Paradies. I think we do not have building people here, or on their way, no, says the semaphore back there?
I can take up the Health and Human Services.
Why don't we do Health and Human Services and we'll just hold the building?
I know Alan is very committed to this, and wants to be here, but I think in the interest of our schedule, I'll take it up. So these are both new positions, effective just with the new fiscal year that began a few days ago. You all know that the Human Services Specialist was the new position that was created out of the reorganization with the Human Relations Youth Resources, and the other is a Public Health Specialist that came out of the cumulative regulatory changes that have been enacted over the last few years.
Plastic.
Plastics, styrofoam, cigarettes, you name it, and so we felt strongly that we had to create a part-time position in the department to augment the inspection responsibilities, and so that's a brand-new position as well. So they were just approved out of the budget, but we do need your authorization to fill them.
All right, any questions? I think we've certainly discussed these positions at great length at other times, but by all means, if you have any comments to add at the moment?
Nope.
Nope? All right, then I move that we authorize filling the following vacancies in Health and Human Services Department, a Human Services Specialist, and a Senior Public Health Specialist. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now we've only held the building department items, and we will continue to hold them to hope that someone will appear to talk about it. If not, we'll vote them eventually before the meeting's over. And our next item is interviews for the override study committee. And I'm just going to call out some names and ask people to raise hands, only to see who's present, who's on our list. Ms. Gelbart, thank you. Mr. Glover, thank you. Mr. Lowenstein, thank you. Mr. Sandman, okay. Mr. Selwyn, okay. Mr. Sturgios?
Sullivan, you missed one.
Oh, sorry. No, Selwyn then Sturgios. All right, Sturgios is not here, okay. Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Mr. Basset and Mr. Lowey. All right, we have two, that's fine. And unless there is an issue with, I think we're just going to take them, I believe, in the order in which they're listed on our calendar, which as near as I can tell is totally random. So there's no, there's no preference here, folks. It's just the way the names came out of the shaker. Ms. Gelbart, would you like to come forward? And I will just explain to you our general sort of interest. We will give you time to tell us about your own background and your particular interest in this committee and its work, and what you understand would be involved in the work of the committee, okay? And for Mr. Banka's information, we have the first override study candidate before us, and this is Janet Gelbart, and we have not asked her any questions, and she has not spoken yet. But we are now going to turn the microphone over to her, and my one just other footnote item is pull the microphone forward, because this is being taped and recorded, and we want our audience to hear what you have to say.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for having me here. I have about a thirty-year career in nonprofit financial management in a variety of organizations, ranging from the Girl Scouts to Oxfam America. My particular talent interest is budgets and making sense out of numbers. I think strategically, I've been involved in many team endeavors, because that's the way the business world works these days. And I am recently retired and felt that I have the time to devote to something like this. I'm really quite ignorant as to what the committee actually requires. Expect to learn more about that tonight.
Okay, we do have resume information here. Are there questions from members of the board?
Maybe it'd be a good idea, since I think most of the candidates are here, if Selectman Banka tells them his co-chairs
Why don't you describe the
what he thinks the committee will be.
That's fair.
I, I, thank you very much. And is Susan here?
I'm texting her as we speak.
Okay, Susan Wolf Ditko of the School Committee, who is the co-chair of the committee, will also be here this evening, listening to these interviews. The override study committee is basically going to be following on the work of the B-Space Committee, which is underway right now. And our job will be to look at the recommendations of the B-Space Committee, look at, as I conceive this committee, look at the assumptions that underlie some of the work of the B-Space Committee and some of the basic need or perceived need, and I think real need, for additional space in the schools. And obviously, one of the major issues behind that is the anticipated population growth in the schools. And I would hope that this committee would be able to determine whether we are looking at a, or perhaps make a better-educated projection of what's going to happen in the future, whether we're looking at a trend or we're looking at something that is not so long-lasting. And what has happened to this point is we've looked at live births and then at the number of children entering kindergarten five years later. I think that there are probably, in our particular community, other drivers. I've already spoken to some real estate agents to see what their take is. I would hope that we would be talking to the BRA, that we'd be talking to the Longwood Medical Area. We know that there are drivers from those areas in terms of employment and also fellowship and postgraduate population in the town. So I think, you know, one first step would be to get, to see if we can get a better handle, and we may not be able to, but to see if we can get a better handle on the population. I also think that we are going to be looking at efficiencies within the schools and, to some extent, within the town. When I became a selectman five years ago, one of the first things I did was to chair an efficiency initiative committee that looked at town budgets and brought in third parties, citizens of the town, to look at the town budgets and to make recommendations for efficiencies, about ninety percent of which have been implemented and which have saved the town significant amounts of money. I think that we will be looking at the same sort of process, you know, refreshing this on the town side, but also doing a similar process on the school side, I would hope. And there are, I think, some consultants that we might bring in to do that. I think we're going to be looking at technology. I know Susan Ditko has a particular interest in that, and we are going to be looking at whether we, the implementation of technology could both improve education and perhaps result in greater efficiency, both effectiveness and efficiencies in the operation of the schools. And I think one thing that we are going to have to do is take this information and do some modeling going forward. What will happen under various assumptions? There are policy changes that can be implemented with regard to class size, districts, technology, non-mandated programs, which include, among others, Metco and the so-called materials fee. What, if changes are made in any of these policies, what will the impact be on the town's budgetary needs down the road? And that, I think, is going to be basically a modeling process. I probably missed some things, but it's
And ultimately, are you not going to boil down,
Yeah, I mean
synthesize all this and come up with a recommendation?
Ultimately, ultimately, we are going to have to make a recommendation to the town for either an override or a debt exclusion or both. The charge of the selectmen to this committee was to accomplish this by March first with respect to the fiscal year fifteen budget, and to see how far we got on the longer-term issues by March first, and to ultimately make recommendations with regard to that. So it is, this is, I think, one of the most significant issues that the town is going to be looking at. We're going to be informed by the B-Space Committee. You know, right now, the B-Space Committee and three of my fellow selectmen sit on that committee. Our, is, that committee is looking at, for example, the feasibility of expansion at our various neighborhood schools. Is that possible? To what extent is that possible? What could happen at the high school? So that sort of groundwork is going to be done by B-Space. And ultimately, this committee will be looking at the needs with some fresh eyes and making recommendations to the selectmen for potential overrides or debt exclusions.
And I'm just going to say that there's a set of decision points that will be taken, that will be going on, to some extent, in parallel, which will not, I think, be, I hope, too confusing, but just to be clear, the committee that's looking at school space will ultimately make its recommendation to the school committee, all right? And that will presumably happen in September of this year. At that point, the school committee will review the recommendations and presumably fairly quickly be able to support one or more of the options that are recommended to them. Those will then be the specific facility options that would be pursued with a combination of financing, as Selectman Banka has explained. What we are allowed to do under Proposition Two and a Half is to have a vote of the community, the residents, to override our limits. And we can do it for a cash amount with a particular purpose, or we can do it what's called debt exclusion, where we've got a particular capital project with a particular cost, and we can then use that to offset the debt service on that project. Okay, end of education. Whoops.
Let me just make one final comment and give you a little bit of time to think about this. One question that I will be asking, and I will ask you, and sadly, you will have less time to think about this than the others.
Oh, come on, we'll give her it.
Oh, that's okay.
But if you were a member of the committee, what particular issues or issues might you want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise and that would be relevant to the charge of the committee?
Okay, I'm a very good analyst. I can do number crunching. I used to say numbers talk to me. I can look at numbers and pick out the ones that matter. I've been a resident of the town for about fourteen years, so I'm somewhat familiar with the finances in the town, and I've been following the B-Space stuff in the tab. I'm very good at seeing the strategic issues. So if we do this, what's it going to mean down the road? And in asking the what-if questions, I usually, used to define my job as a CFO as being somebody who had to ask the hard questions and the rest of them had to answer it. I do spreadsheets, and I just like to roll up my sleeves and get involved in numbers. So if it's an interesting question, I'll spend a lot of time on it. And as I said, I recently retired, so I do have time to spend.
Other members have a question? Sorry to interrupt you, Selectman Banka, but yes, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, what familiarity do you have with the Brookline schools?
Just that they're there. I moved to Brookline. My daughter has little ones of her own, so I've not been involved. But from what I've been reading, it's not much different from the situation when I lived in Newton. My daughter went through Newton schools at exactly the right time, because they'd just closed a bunch of schools. So she had lots of teachers, and then they started to have to reopen schools or look at the space crunch issues, and it's very difficult. And Brookline also has a lot of kids that may or may not be going to the public schools, because they go to private schools. And that has an impact that's difficult to tell, and sometimes that kicks in more at the high school level. So if you're talking about building elementary schools, the high school seems to have been added on to already. If you look at the structure of the building, it doesn't look like this is where it started and ended. And so it's what will, what will it mean? Both of, both my daughter and son-in-law are involved in education, and I'm a firm believer that part of what makes this a good town to live in is the quality of the education. So finding a solution that would work is something that I'd be very interested in participating in.
Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. My question is, what biases do you come with? And I assume everybody has some biases, so don't be embarrassed to admit that you have any. Whether it's biases in favor of education, biases in favor of any particular solutions to our enrollment crunch that have been discussed, biases in favor of any building sites, if that's your solution. Biases in favor?
I have a bias against using Amory Field. I love Hall Pond, and I can't imagine it not being somehow impacted, and I live right near there. So that would be a bias in terms of space.
Thank you.
Having gone through, when I lived in Newton, I'm not interested in a short-term answer. While we were there, they decided to have K-six and seven-eight and nine-twelve, and then they changed it. It kept impacting the junior high school, or do we call it middle school? And they always said it was pedagogical, but it happened too frequently for that. I like long-term solutions. I think that equality education is something that we owe kids, period. So I'm very biased toward that and toward the next generation.
Thank you.
Yes, Selectman Woschinski?
Two questions. Having served myself on the prior override study committee, it is a good time commitment in evenings and mornings. And you said you were retired, so now that you have the time. So do you see yourself having the time between now and probably through the spring?
I would. I have a second grandchild that's due the end of this month, and will be called upon to help out there, but they're just one town over, so it's not going to be an overburden. So yes, I think I have the time now.
And the other piece of the experience that I experienced is, this is a committee that's going to be in the public eye. It's going to be the eye of the storm. How do you feel about operating in that kind of environment?
I've always lived there in the organizations that I worked in, although it wasn't as public. I don't think I made it into the newspaper. But I worked with a lot of publicly funded organizations. Working with the Girl Scouts was probably fairly public, because I worked when Shannon was leading the Patriots' Trail Council. So that doesn't bother me at all. I'm used to being, standing up in front of a group of people and presenting facts. I try to stay sort of even-toned and never talk to the press unless somebody's told me what to say. I learned somewhere along the way that you never pick up the phone if you're not prepared, because you might accidentally say something you really didn't mean to say. But I've not dealt with the press myself, so.
Okay, other questions from members of the board?
And let me just, let me just make a comment following up on Selectman Woschinski's comment. This will be a working committee. And Susan Wolf Ditko and I have talked about it, and I expect that August, the selectmen will be interviewing today and two weeks from now. And we may, given the number of applications that are coming in, have to interview after that. But I think August tends not to be a month when a lot of people could get together. I would hope that we would make the appointments in early August or in August at some point at the latest, and perhaps have a get-together meeting, and then really begin in earnest in the middle of September and work through the winter and into the spring. So, and the committee will meet, I think, at least once every two weeks, maybe more often. But I really do foresee that there will be task forces that will be working on specific issues and trying to run down questions and doing particular analysis in between those meetings. So just to give everybody some idea of what I think will be involved in this process. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Glover. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Selectman. My name is Michael Glover. My primary interest in being on the committee probably has to do with my two young daughters. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old as well as a three-month-old, so I'm very concerned with what's going to be going on.
It's impressive that anyone with a three-month-old has time to serve on committees, but very good.
Yeah, I'm very thankful to my wife, too, who allows me to get out of the house more than I probably should. But they're obviously a big motivator for me in terms of being interested in being a part of the committee. In addition to that, I In addition to that, I have a real, genuine interest in public service. I currently work for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation as an attorney there, and one of the main reasons for me moving there, which I did a few years ago out of private practice, was the desire to be in the public sector and to serve as much as I could. And I saw this opportunity as a logical chance to continue to do that. Like I said, in terms of my background, I am an attorney specializing mostly in real estate, commercial real estate for the first five years of my practice before moving over to DOT. As part of that, I represented developers, lenders, a variety of other folks, institutions, et cetera, doing a variety of different things in terms of real estate development. Probably most pertinent to the work that the committee would be doing is probably some of the work that I did on the financing side. I've been involved in a lot of different, very complicated sorts of financing transactions, including transactions involving municipal bond financing, various types of tax credit financing, whether it be low-income housing tax credit financing, new markets tax credit financing, historic tax credit financing, et cetera. So I think I have a pretty good understanding generally of financial principles in that regard in a way that I think would be helpful to the committee.
So let me ask the question that I said I would ask, and that is, what particular issue or issues might you want to carve out? I indicated that we will probably be working on, in some sort of a task force basis, that would fit your interests and your expertise and that would be relevant to the charge of the committee. And perhaps you've just answered it with your last comment about work on finance and real estate.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, to the extent, and I think a lot of folks will be weighing in on the finance part, and that certainly would be part of it in terms of sort of synthesizing that and making sure we all understand what that means in a real-world context, and in general, other legal issues that may arise, or real estate or construction issues.
Selectman Daley, please go.
I'm wondering how long you've lived in Brookline, and since your kids are very young, I don't know if you've had, have you had any opportunity to get familiar with our schools?
We haven't lived here long. We moved here in November. We lived in Jamaica Plain before that.
Aha, you are the source of our increasing enrollment!
I realize I'm part of the problem.
You've got to own up to that!
Yes, no. But, you know, one of the reasons, like most people, for moving to Brookline was the schools. It's a huge motivator, and probably the number-one motivator for us and a lot of other people for coming to town. I don't know intimately about the schools, except the fact that they're all great.
I'll ask my question that I asked previously, too. Do you come with any biases, or assuming you do come with biases, what are your biases? Do you have, have you already developed some preferences for a particular solution, for a particular site, if the solution involves building? Do you have schools at all costs, or are you an austerity kind of person?
I think I'm a pragmatist, I guess, in terms of being able to look at the entire picture and think about what's really best for everybody. And I think you can't really come to any conclusion until you look at the whole picture. I've been sort of following the various solutions that have been proposed. I don't necessarily think I have any bias towards any of them in particular. I probably have gotten used to the idea of my kids going to the school that I, if they were in school today, they would be going to, so anything that would change that would probably be a bias in my mind. But I'm willing to acknowledge that, and I would be hopeful that other members of the committee would help me work through that.
What would that be, Pierce District?
Lincoln.
New Lincoln.
He lives around the corner from me.
Oh, that's right, Franklin, okay, great.
All right, other questions for Mr. Glover?
I'll ask my questions regarding the time commitment. Does your job give you the flexibility to do some morning meetings? Because that will invariably, I should, if the past is any guide, there will be some. And then with the family situation, will you have the time in the fall going into the spring to do this?
I believe so. I think if I were still in private practice, it may not be the same answer. But I think working for the state affords a lot of flexibility in terms of schedule, and I don't see it as being an issue.
And my second question is, how do you feel about being in the public eye, the eye of the storm?
Well, I think it's something that I'm somewhat used to. In the work that I do now, I work on a lot of projects that end up in the paper quite a bit. I've been pretty involved in the Fenway Center project, which is a large air rights development over by Fenway Park, some of the other air rights deals that MassDOT is working on in the Back Bay that are sort of just getting underway now, as well as some other sort of major projects in the city that are often in the press. So I think I have familiarity with the sensitivities that go along with that. You know, I don't think as a member of the committee that any member of the committee, other than maybe the chair, is going to be out in front in terms of dealing with those issues, but in terms of advising as to what may be the best strategy in terms of dealing with the public issues that come up, I think I could be helpful.
Let me just note that there are co-chairs of this committee, and actually, I see Susan Wolf Ditkoof is here now. So I guess there will be two of us who are in the eye of the storm. But I think this is, this is a committee where there will clearly be a lot of interest, and I think that that interest will be directed at all members of the committee potentially.
Okay, I'm just going to make a total aside comment, and that is that your undergraduate degree was in journalism, which leads me to ask if you have also, in your experience, had the role of a reporter-observer?
To some degree. When I was, I never worked after college as a reporter. When I was in college, I worked at The Globe for a couple of years. And in that role, was able to go out and do, work on some small stories, and tried my hand, so to speak, at being a reporter. But beyond that, that's pretty much the extent of what I did.
Right, but at least some training in observation and narrative, I think, is what I was observing.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think so. And even having the ability to observe other professionals doing the job, understanding what they're looking for and what they're trying to get out in their stories, I think has been useful in everything that I've done.
I could imagine.
You see, Betsy was a newspaper editor in college, so.
Selectman Daley.
I just have one final question. So the MBTA does not come under the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, does it?
Technically, no. There is.
Because I've actually wondered about, when we were talking about, well, where could we build? I wondered about, well, how about if we built out over the MBTA tracks? Wouldn't be a conflict of interest for you?
No, the Secretary, Secretary Davie has asserted a lot of control over the MBTA, but legally, they are separate entities, and technically, the general manager of the MBTA could choose to ignore the Secretary, although she doesn't do that generally.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Lowenstein.
Good evening, how's everybody?
Welcome.
Great to be here. So I'm Mark Lowenstein. I'm a relatively new town meeting member. It's been a little over a year representing Precinct 12. And one of the reasons why I ran for town meeting is because I could see that this issue was going to not only surface, but sort of accelerate in terms of its need for the town to address. And I had certainly had in mind that I would somehow, in some shape or form, get involved in this issue. I envisioned it might be specifically on an override committee, but certainly had that sense. So my career background, I've been a longtime consultant in the technology space, mainly in mobiles. So I've run my own firm for about 10 years called Mobile Ecosystem. I work as a strategy advisor to companies across the mobile and digital media value chains. I worked for a company in the space called The Yankee Group, market research and consulting firm, for 10 years. I was also VP of Strategy at Verizon Wireless for a brief time. So I don't bring to this committee the sort of finance background that some of the other candidates do. I think I would complement them with sort of an analytical and strategic planning background. From the standpoint of what I've done involving the town, again, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 12. I was involved, before I was a town meeting member in the last override, when, this was, I think, three years ago?
2008.
Okay, 2008 was actually when, just after we moved to town, just as a volunteer, helping to bring people onboard and, you know, calling people and knocking on doors and talking up the issue. I was in favor of the override as a citizen and got involved there. Other commitments, I'm on the board of the Boston Jewish Film Festival, where I led a group where we sort of did a five-year strategic plan for that organization, hired a new artistic director, and I've been involved in sort of a number of different other related volunteer activities in the town, particularly more related to the school. And I've got a child now who's in, just completed sixth grade at Runcle, and I've got a high schooler who just completed ninth grade. So sort of that's another thing I think I bring to bear, not only as a parent, but as a parent of children who are at both ends of the Brookline school system.
All right. Questions, members of the board? Selectman Banca.
You may have seen this one coming. If you were a member of the committee, what particular issue or issues might you want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise and that would be relevant to the charge of the committee?
Sure, I think there's two. One is sort of just the long-term aspect of this. You know, I know that the committee has been formed because the issue of the schools and school crowding is coming to a head, but I think it's also an opportunity for the town to sort of think long-term about how it's spending its funds on education and to be looking at, for example, at the technology area, which is an area where I have a fair bit of experience. Again, I do a lot of work with companies in the mobile and digital media spaces, which involves a lot of the technologies that are now being brought to bear for the possibilities in education, whether it's tablet computing or other sorts of applications in digital media related to education. It's not an area where I've deeply specialized, but I'm quite familiar. I spend my time sort of in the technology space, so I think I'd like to become involved in the technology aspect. I also think that if there's an area I'd like to sort of sink my teeth into as part of this committee is not only sort of the capital aspects of this, but the operational aspects of it, because at the same time, we're looking at where we're going to be physically building. I think we also need to look relatively long-term at the sorts of programs that we have. And Selectman Banca mentioned efficiencies, but also, you know, what are the programming needs and the operational needs we're going to be having going forward? So for example, if we're looking at an 8-9 as a possibility as far as the school goes, what does that mean sort of operationally? What does that mean from the standpoint of curriculum and educational structure for kids, for example, who are going to be going from what was going to be high school experience to sort of a middle school experience? I think those are the sorts of things that'll come up as we look at some of the B-Space recommendations in this committee.
Other questions? Selectman Goldstein.
Thanks. And what biases do you come with? Any early thoughts about the correct solution, the correct location, or the correct approach to the problem?
I don't have a particular bias in terms of location. The one bias, I guess, I do have is that the experience that high schoolers have today, if we have to find a solution that involves either a second building or 8-9, that the experience that the high schoolers have today, by the time they get to ninth grade and starting in ninth grade, is not at all diluted as a result of what B-Space recommends. If, for example, there's an 8-9, so I'm not necessarily against 8-9, but I would be very against 8-9 if it meant that the kids who have waited till they get to ninth grade for the sorts of experiences they're getting in high school are at all sort of diluted or watered down. So that's, I guess, a position or a bias that I would bring, but other than that, nothing from the standpoint of where or redistricting or anything like that.
Good, thank you.
Selectman Wyszynski.
And I'll go with my more operational questions. Can you speak to your availability during the next year?
Right.
And how do you feel about being in the public eye and becoming more of a public figure?
Sure, sure. So I run my own business, which I run out of my house, and so I do have some flexibility in terms of schedule, so certainly evenings and then occasional mornings if that's required. I do travel some for work, but I, again, have a reasonable amount of control over that, so I certainly think I could fulfill the commitment time-wise. And from the standpoint of public eye, I'm fairly accustomed to it. I'm in the public eye a fair bit from the standpoint of my day job. I'm interviewed a lot in the media on sort of next-generation products and services in the technology space, and I've done a lot of writing. I'm sort of, my work goes out to thousands of people from the standpoint of some public documents that I put out. So pretty accustomed to being in the public eye.
Could I just ask what your travel schedule is, Mike?
No more than 20% of the time.
Yeah.
And generally, I have a pretty good visibility of when it's going to be. It's not like all of a sudden, you know, tonight I find out I've got to be somewhere Friday.
Well, I know you're familiar with the schools, since you have kids in there, so I'm going to, and I'm going to say, I'm a little concerned, I'm hearing you talk a lot about focusing on the 8-9 concept, and personally, I don't like that. So are you saying you favor the?
No, not at all, not at all.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
I don't have, actually don't have a position on 8-9 positive or negative. The only position or, you know, bias that I would.
I'll just say for all the other candidates, I'd like to hear a negative position on that. No, just kidding, just kidding.
The only, the only thing I, you know, the only.
Bias is with Davie.
The only bias I bring, well, the only strong position I bring is that, you know, whatever, is in favor of the kids, that, you know, that we think about, whatever solution that we come up with through B-Space and then in the work in this committee, very strong feeling of the public schools, a very strong feeling of the experience that the high school provides, and I just want to make sure that all that strength is maintained no matter what solution we come up with.
I mean, I know when, usually when you're a parent with kids in the schools, you can think of a lot of things that you wish the schools would do additionally that they're not doing. But can you think of anything, areas where you think, you have noticed that maybe there is an opportunity for consolidation or, you know, something that would cost-effective things that you think they might do that they aren't doing now? Have you got any thoughts on that?
That's a really good question. I think this is a really good opportunity to look at some of that. And certainly, given where things are going with technology, it provides an opportunity not only for some efficiencies, but to maybe revisit the, I don't think this group is charged with looking at the curriculum, but to maybe, you know, take a look at sort of what the schools are trying to accomplish, and whether it's new programs that we think about that are maybe technology-oriented, that might require us, instead of just adding things, to do that when we look at other programs that maybe don't have the level of enrollment or the same needs as they might have 10 or 20 years ago. I think this provides an opportunity for the committee to look sort of longer-term at some of the programming and some of the operational elements of it. But I think that there is certainly, so there's technology from the standpoint of education, but there's also technology from the standpoint of efficiencies that might help to balance some of the needs on the operational side.
Okay, any other questions? Then thank you very much, we appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to provide a little bit of, I guess, explanation of the charge to the override study committee. I don't think it's going to be reviewing pedagogy and curriculum.
Right.
Okay, I think there's some conversation going on that could mislead people in that direction, and I don't want to mislead anybody who's thinking about that. School committee is in charge of that, and to the extent that it is their responsibility and they are, I would say, not under the Board of
and they are, I would say, not under the Board of Selectmen with regard to that, I just want everybody to understand that we're not reviewing pedagogy here, okay? And I don't think you said that. It's just the discussion about technology sort of raises some questions.
I'll make one note slightly different. The one, the one option B-Space has formally voted to take off the table is eight-nine.
Right.
So, I think it's probably a good assumption at this point that an eight-nine recommendation isn't going to come out of B-Space.
You never can tell.
You never can tell. It can always be reconsidered.
Right. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Sandman.
Good evening.
Who knows about B-Space?
I do, just a little bit. I'm Mike Sandman, and I've had two sequential business careers and one continuing community service career that bring me to be interested in specifically in the override study committee. For the first 20 years or so of my business career, I was involved in managing a manufacturing company and had ultimately responsibility for some major capital investments and for budgeting, and I got a pretty good sense of budgeting issues in a moderately complex environment. Then became a consultant, and one of the things that Mike, that I've done a great deal of is helping clients figure out how to compete better, including having, giving them the ability to understand their competitors' processes and costs in comparison to their own. And I could tell you all kinds of fascinating stories about everything from pepperoni to is made to how software is written in a very large, large software shop. So, I have a pretty good sense of understanding budgeting models and business models and the way processes and costs are very tightly linked. As a community volunteer, I was fortunate to be a chairman of the Brookline Community Foundation at the point that it was making a transition into a full-fledged community foundation and was extremely fortunate to be able to work with a superb executive director. And...
All right.
All right, there we go.
That doesn't get you any votes, just be clear about that.
This obvious pandering.
Yeah, right.
Just happens to be true, however. Anyway, I'm a member of the advisory committee, which, and a member of the school budget subcommittee on the advisory committee, and I'm the advisory committee's representative to the B-Space Committee. And I was on the transportation board for 12 years, and so I anticipate the question about being in the public eye and say that I have a lightning rod built into me because of the need to deflect or channel lightning strikes, so that the public eye doesn't trouble me a bit. Let me stop there and I'll take your questions.
Okay. Selectman Banker?
Sure. You've heard the question I've asked all of the other applicants. And let me just say, this is really an embarrassment of riches in terms of the individuals who are applying to this committee, and what we're seeing today is less than half of the people who have applied. So, we are extremely fortunate as a town to have this commitment from its citizens, and it really is a tribute to the volunteerism in this town, so. But my question is, if you were a member of the committee, what particular issue or issues might you want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise and that would be relevant to the work of the committee?
Right. I think there's, there's not going to be a perfect solution coming out of B-Space. That is, there is no perfect site, there's no perfect way to expand the number of classrooms without upsetting somebody, or perhaps a lot of somebodies. And one of the most important tasks is going to be to take the recommendation that comes out, move it forward, the school committee's presumably going to make a decision, the override study committee is then going to have to develop the financial picture and both the quantitative and qualitative evidence to support the decision that the school committee makes, and I am very interested in trying to help develop the quantitative and qualitative evidence in a way that the voters can understand and hopefully accept.
Selectman Goldstein.
So, Michael, for you, I'm going to skip my standard question, my bias, because I think I have a good idea about...
You know all of my biases because you're on the committee, right?
Or your lack of bias, I think, actually, is what I should be saying.
Actually, I have one major bias. I hate the New York Yankees.
More pandering.
More pandering, that's what I was going to say.
As pertinent as that was to the discussion, I have another question, so it's a sort of bias. So, maybe it's sort of a compare, contrast. A member of the B-Space Committee, then serving on the override study committee, might be biased in one way in order to, because they've kind of already studied it, and they may be a voice to kind of enforce or reinforce the process that B-Space has gone through. Or it may be that somebody who was on B-Space has difficulty sort of hitting the reset button and taking a fresh look at the matter. And, yeah, any thoughts on that dichotomy?
The question about the, taking a fresh look is an important one. When I was first appointed to the B-Space Committee, I really needed to be convinced that there was a need for as many additional classrooms as the school department was talking about, and looked at the data and the demographics and so forth, and became quite convinced that we're not about to embark on building something that we will empty out, you know, or won't have a need for in just a few years. So, I think we have a long-term need, and I'm quite sure that I won't reset that belief. That may be good or that may be bad, but that, I go into this in the expectation that we are going to need substantial funding for both operating and capital expenses to sustain the schools.
So, if I can whittle that down a little bit, it sounds like you're more likely to be a voice for what B-Space went through on the override committee than you are to be, you know, hitting that reset button and starting afresh.
Right, although I would say there's an advantage to that in that I can explain what the thinking was in fairly short order.
Thank you.
Selectman Daly? Yeah. So, Mike, I know as a member of the school subcommittee on the advisory committee, you're familiar with the school budget, and I confess I cannot remember, but I think you have older kids that have been for the Brookline Schools?
Right. Neither one of my children went to Brookline Schools. One of them lives in Brookline, the other one did for a little while and actually went to Jamaica Plain, and she'll be back, I'm sure, along the same lines as we've already heard.
Selectman Wyszynski.
And my other question regarding your schedule during the...
Right.
What's it look like?
So, I travel, once every two months, I go to the Far East, to Southeast Asia specifically. And I've been able to work my commitments to various committees that I've been active in around that schedule pretty well. A couple of times, I've participated in a meeting by conference call from time zone 12 hours apart, and that actually works pretty well. And as long as I can do that on occasion, I'm quite comfortable that I can be available. Other than that, I work 60% of full-time. That doesn't mean three days a week, as I keep reminding my wife, it means 60% of full-time. So, I have a fair amount of flexibility mornings and certain days and so forth.
Okay.
Just when you travel once every two months, for how long are you out of the country?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
All right. Then, thank you very much for your continued interest in municipal affairs, your unending interest in municipal affairs. And the next person is Mr. Selwyn.
Hi, I'm Lee Selwyn. I've lived in Brookline for about 45 years. I sent three kids from K through 12 through the Brookline School System, so I'm, have a lot of experience with our schools and their importance to the town. I'm a professional economist. My areas of specialization is in public policy economics, principally in technology-impacted areas such as telecommunications, internet, and other technology industries. I have been working in this field continuously for about as long as I've been living in Brookline, I guess. And I, my work is as a consultant. I started a consulting firm, Economics and Technology Incorporated, back in 1972, and I've served as its head ever since. I also have expertise in taxation, again, relating to technology industries. I've served as consultant to the IRS, to various state and municipal taxing authorities, and I think that that area of experience is also potentially valuable in the context of looking at override issues. I do a lot of work with modeling and statistical analysis and examining various alternative models of the issues that we deal with. So, I think that that experience is also helpful. I've been a town meeting member for a little over four years and have been on the advisory committee ever since being first elected to town meeting. I've also been on the redistricting committee two years ago. I serve as the advisory committee's representative on the audit committee. I was appointed to chair moderator's committee on parking zoning policy, which we expect to actually have a report out sometime this summer, which goes to the question of potential time availability once that's done. And I think that my work in the advisory committee and in the audit committee in particular has given me a good understanding of town financing, town budgeting issues, and I think that I can apply that to the issues of the override.
Question to Mr. Selwyn.
Yes. If you were a member of the committee, this is a question that I've asked everybody, is there a particular issue or other issues that you'd want to carve out that would fit your interests and your expertise that would be relevant to the charge of the committee?
Well, I think that I would want to focus principally on economic trade-offs and modeling issues. I think there is still some issues, a question about some of the forecasts that are driving this process, and within that context, there's also the matter of trade-offs. A lot of the discussion that we get in, whenever there are issues that are controversial, is that people tend to take positions that are absolute, and that I think it's important to understand trade-offs. For example, there are trade-offs between some of the capital requirements for buildings and class size. Now, one has to make economic judgments and similar types of judgments as to the relative merits and demerits of each of these alternatives. Some of this can be evaluated quantitatively through modeling, and that's an area that I know something about and think that I can contribute to. So, that's, I guess that's probably the major area that I would find, I think that my experience would be helpful. And also in the taxation area, certainly, we're dealing with tax policy, we're dealing with alternate types of override and debt models that potentially may have to be included in the committee's consideration. These are areas I know something about.
Selectman Goldstein.
Thanks, and thanks, Lee, for, you're another one who's got an incredible history and incredible appetite for public service to the town. So, I'll ask you, and I think I know the answer to this, but what biases do you come with?
Well, I actually feel fairly strongly that a K-8, K-8, 912 solution is the right solution, and we should be preserving it. And obviously, there are potential costs of doing that, and that's exactly the kind of trade-off that I think needs to be studied. I grew up in New York when we were dealing with K-6 and 7 to 9 and 10 to 12. This is a system that actually, to some extent, was put in place as I was growing up, and it was a disaster, as I think people began to recognize. I've always felt that the Brookline system, which is in a lot of ways unique, because it doesn't happen very often, is really an important strength of our system. So, if I have a bias, that would be it. Now, you know, I say at the same time, nothing is absolute, and that's maybe my other bias, is that I think we have to look at the various alternatives and we have to make judgments about how one trade, how you trade one off against the other. If the choice is, for example, in order to preserve K-8, you need to make some compromises elsewhere, then we need to find a way to evaluate the benefits of K-8 vis-à-vis alternate solutions against the costs in the economic sense of whatever compromises have to be made. And to me, the bias I have is that this needs to be done, and it needs to be done in a consistent and scientific way, and modeling is a particularly good approach to making those kinds of trade-offs. Thank you.
Selectman Daly? Yeah, so, Lee, I know your kids are a little bit older, and you...
My baby's 40.
And you're not, you're not on the school subcommittee of the advisory committee, are you?
No, I'm not.
No. So, do you have any sort of more recent familiarity with the schools and, other than the general discussions you've been hearing about their space needs?
Well, I mean, I certainly have addressed school-related issues in the advisory committee and audit committee contexts, and I've participated, and we meet, as you know, we meet on a regular basis with members of the school department to address budgeting and other issues. I've raised a number of issues about, for example, this seemingly elusive concept of average cost versus incremental cost. Much of the school department, I've found, seems to not fully understand some of those economics in the way they make judgments, and they tend to focus on effects of average cost rather than the short and long-term effects of the decisions they make on how that affects average cost, which is essentially an incremental cost concept. These are economic issues that I've attempted in my work on the advisory committee to raise and to address with the school department. So, yes, I'm not on the school subcommittee, but I certainly have maintained a strong interest and involvement in those issues.
When you say that, just so I can see if I understand, you mean if you have one extra student, but that forces you to have a second section of the, or a third or fourth section of the grade, that the incremental cost is very high?
A lot of the decisions that, my sense that the school department makes are long-term decisions, but that the judgments frequently that are applied are, involve short-term thinking. In other words, I, for example, I've raised questions with the superintendent about the concept of increasing average class size, and, you know, the responses are, well, you know, it really doesn't make any real difference if we have 21 or 22 or 23 in the class, because, you know, you don't really save anything if you cut a few kids out of some sections, because you still end up with the same number of sections. But long-term, these things do have an impact. You can't make instant adjustments, but you have to make adjustments, you have to make judgments of long-term effects, and the... And the, you know, there have been discussions, for example, with respect to the treatment of town employees and Metco, with respect to the way that these are accounted for in the school budget. Once again, we've been told on numerous occasions that, you know, it really doesn't cost us anything, because in fact, you just kind of take an empty seat in the corner of a classroom, stick a kid in there, and it's basically free. And that's short-term thinking, and I think that we need to come to grips with the fact that these are long-term decisions that have to be addressed, and that they have long-term consequences. And you can't make judgments about long-term policy without recognizing the long-term budgetary and capital consequences.
Yeah, but how do you monetize? I mean, I happen to think that the Metco program brings a very important economic, as well as racial and ethnic diversity, to our schools. So how do you monetize what that value is when you're making your model?
Well, you know, the value is subjective, but what we have a problem with, for both the town employee program and Metco, is that we don't understand fully what the actual costs are, because they are not really being addressed in terms of their long-term impact. And what you need to do, obviously, when you, there are subjective benefits to both of these programs, and they have to be recognized, but they're not, nothing is absolute, and you need to be able to understand the consequences of a decision to embark on a program that is permanent in order to make the cost-benefit trade-off. How much are we willing to pay for whatever subjective benefits we see coming from these programs? And the appropriate way to do that is to understand what their impact actually is, their long-term impact on the town. I'm not, in any sense, in favor of abandoning either of these programs, but I do believe that it is important to understand what their impact is.
Very sorry, but I really do think we have to move on. We have four more candidates.
Can I just ask, what's your schedule look like?
You know, when I became a town meeting member, I made a decision from day one that I didn't want to be a back-bencher, and I got myself heavily involved in a number of things, and I've somehow maintained, been able to do that, and I don't see it as a problem continuing on that same basis.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your interest. And I'm going to quickly move back to the items we held from our earlier, the earlier part of the meeting. We have two building department items. Mr. Giggly, I think we've already approved these, and these are contracts for, that we've already authorized, is that correct?
Yes, and first, my apologies, I was down at the building commission, and we were tied up on a few things. The two items under consideration tonight are, excuse me, a change order, number one, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents for roofing work to be completed by Custom Carpet and Slate at fire station. This is actually at number seven. And it is, if you know the building, the adjacent privately-owned building is literally feet away from the fire stations, probably from here to there.
Seven is Washington Square?
Yeah. And this, I personally wasn't aware of it, but we've been made aware that there's a issue of water shedding from our building into, onto, and into the private property next door. We need to correct that. And these measures include additional downspout, modifications to the gutter, rain diverter, and snow guards to help mitigate that issue. And if approved, we're ready to get going on that, and that would basically pretty much close out this particular project.
I just had one question. So I noticed you're looking for a snow rail, which is actually the most costly item. And so is that, is that a slate roof?
Yeah.
All right. And the second one, I believe we've already approved, and we're now executing the contract for the Unified Arts Building.
Yes.
We discussed this with you.
Correct. You voted to award that, which allowed the process of crafting the contract and securing the bonds.
Okay.
And tonight is the actual voting of the contract, and just today, the school committee and the board of selectmen both approved the contract, and...
You said the building commission.
Excuse me, the building commission, yes. I'm sorry, with these short, summer schedules, I'm trying to get everything, you know. So they approved them earlier today, so.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Giggly? Then I move that we approve change order number one, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents for roof work to be completed at fire stations number one, five, and seven. And I move that we execute the contract for the building envelope repairs to the Unified Arts Building in the amount of one million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Binka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving back, Mr. Sturgis.
Good evening, thanks for an opportunity to speak with you. Like you, I'm very impressed, and I'm sitting here saying, wow, there are a lot of great people who've applied for this, so let me introduce myself. My name's Jim Sturgis. My interests in the committee are probably threefold. One is an immediate interest, which is because I have an eleven-year-old who's still in the district. She's at the Juris School School. And I moved here, like Mr. Glover before, who was speaking, I'm part of your problem. I came in, I took a two-bedroom apartment and filled it with two kids. We planted a flag here, we've been here for fourteen years, and have been in the Washington Square area. So my interest there is an immediate one, obviously. I moved to Brookline from Boston, I'm more of a city kid, because of the schools. And that's because I didn't want to put my kids on a charter-school waiting list, which at the time, nine thousand kids long. Here, the great schools, great community, great parks. So one interest is, I want to make sure these schools remain great schools. The second interest is one that's a policy-related issue. I run Pioneer Institute, I think we're well-known for education work on, yes, curricular issues, charter schools, vocational, technical schools, and many other things, including efficiencies within schools. We've developed all kinds of tools around what is a cost-effective way of delivering education, what are different delivery mechanisms, that sort of thing. So those are interests, those are interests which are deep and policy-driven. The third interest is one where I've been very involved at the state level, I've not been terribly involved, because I'm raising my kids by myself, and I have not had the time until recently to dedicate to something like this. It interests me to do something that's actually related to my community here. My background, besides being at Pioneer for the last seven years, is I worked at the state's environmental affairs office, I was a policy director there. Some of my experience there, I think, is pertinent. I ran the state's water policy development process. In five months, we stood up a committee, we made selections of committee members, we did all the analysis around that, and we delivered not only a policy within five months, but we also delivered the budget and the implementation plan. Not shy, being in the public eye, though, that is not the role here. The role that I would see myself playing here is much more in the sort of analytics around demographics, finance, some of the school delivery things, efficiencies, as well as trying to bring to bear one bias, which I feel strongly, like the previous speaker had, which is the K eight system is very important. And if of interest, I would explain why, I think that from a pedagogical perspective, but that's something that's of deep interest to me. Educationally, I ran, I was the headmaster of a prep school, a school that prepared Japanese-language students who were college-intending to come to the United States. I did that for two and a half years in Japan, I speak Japanese and that sort of stuff, so I have, I understand what it means to run a school, I understand what it means to hire teachers, what it means to meet a budget and that sort of thing, in a school domain, outside of just policy interest there. So I'd stop in terms of introductions and thank you for your time.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, you've heard the question that I've asked, and that is, what issue or issues might you want to carve out that would fit your particular interests and your expertise and the charge of this committee?
Well, I want to thank my father for a name that begins with S, so plenty of time to prepare. It's pretty simple, it's many of the things that I think that we do on a day-to-day basis, that's taking a look at cost-effectiveness within the system. A previous speaker was talking about, I think it was Mr. Lowenstein was talking about, focusing to some extent on the operations, not just the capital side. I think that's very important, because the whole idea of taking on an override that's related to education, where many of the taxpayers within town are not, do not have kids in school, I think we have to show them a strong sense of responsibility to their pocketbooks, that we're doing this in a very, very responsible way, that we address the issue, we do in a responsible way. Demographics is something that interests me, I do not have specific expertise in that area, we've done many, many studies, I have many people I can lean on in that regard. I am very interested in performance and innovation, this is not a curricular issue, this is much more around delivery mechanisms. And what I would say is, for example, just one example, is we do have Chinese, we have Mandarin language programs within our schools, and I think sometimes we get stuck on having a live teacher all the time, doing a lot of that stuff. It's hard to retain really high-quality Chinese-language teachers over time. There are many, many programs out there that are online, that do a really terrific job. So those are sorts of things you could take a look at, it's a delivery mechanism, not a curricular issue, that I think might be worth poking around in.
Okay. Selectman Goldstein.
Thanks. If you've been listening to my question, you know, I've been asking about bias, and by the way, I don't mean, I mean bias in a very positive sense. I want, you know, I want to see balance in a diverse group of viewpoints represented on this committee. So I'll ask you about your biases, but in particular, I want to focus on maybe, in your experience with the Pioneer Institute, you've mentioned different delivery systems and stuff, does that result in a bias in favor of a certain educational model?
No, it doesn't. I think the thing we're looking for is, I'll give you an example, there are many different traditional district school models that we've looked at, that are highly effective, that have shown progress over time, that interest us. So at the high end, if you will, Medfield's public school system has shown, notwithstanding educational attainments that are lower than Brookline's, really strong, strong progress. Also, in delivering education through new innovative ways, they have a lot of online learning that is the basis of their mathematics in science curriculum in the seventh and eighth grades, that's well worth celebrating. I'm also very interested at the low end. Lawrence Public Schools are now in receivership. There are some things that are happening there that I think are pretty exciting. It is a school system that is deeply troubled, but if you take a look at the receiver, some of things he's doing is, he's giving much more flexibility to the school level, not really sticking his hands into decision-making around teachers, letting principals have much more flexibility, but also downsizing the administrative staff. His administrative staff is about a hundred and twenty people, is down to about seventy people now, and he's finding ways to make that work, to make sure the dollars are going back into the schools where the real action is. You know, focusing the central office rather on nitpicking things, I'm not saying that's what happens here in this district at all, that's not, I'm just talking about, my interest goes well beyond charter schools and vocational, technical schools, or even Metco, which are a great supporter of it, Pioneer Institute. So there are lots of different things happening out there in the districts, it's very exciting, and I think also well worth taking a look at, to see if we're doing all that we can to make sure that we're at the very, very top. I mean, given our educational attainments, I'm a great believer that Brookline should not just be the best in Massachusetts, it should be among the best school systems in the entire world. Thank you.
Okay. Selectman Daley.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, since you have an eleven-year-old, you're pretty familiar with the current school system, and you mentioned, I think, already some of your ideas about perhaps some online or that type of learning as a way of economizing or stretching the dollars. Do you have any other thoughts?
Sure. I mean, I think it's well worth taking a look at staffing models, how we pair up teachers, whether we pair up teachers and an aide, what we do in that regard. I do think it's probably well worth taking a look at class size. I do think it's well worth taking a look at the administrative staff to some degree. I do think it's well worth taking a look at, for example, where we are placing administrative staff, just as one example. Does all the administrative staff within the high school need to be within the high school? These are questions that I think are worth looking at, I've taken a look at some of the early numbers, and I don't have any view on any of it, but it's well worth asking. I understand what the charge is here, though, and that is, you're talking about a lot of classroom space, especially at the high school level, so nitpicking on little reforms here and there you could probably do, may not get you to the place where you need to be, and I think you have to be ready to make the decision to do what you need to do to make sure that we welcome kids who are in our schools, and we make sure they have the kind of facilities they absolutely need.
Selectman Wyszynski.
I can tell you're comfortable in the public eye, so I won't ask that. How's your schedule look like for the next year?
You know, that's, it's a serious question for me, okay? But I think the thing is, I've thought about this long and hard, I would say that when I put myself into something, I put myself into something. I think the example I gave of the Water Policy Task Force from soup to nuts in about five months, that was a lot of time, and it's something that if I put myself into it, I wanted a really good job, so I would make the time. My travel schedule is one that I control, and I decide if I'm going to do a trip or go speak someplace, so that's something that's perfectly under my control, if I did commit to it, I would do it.
I really don't feel comfortable asking you this question, but you did say you were raising your kids alone, and I worry about evening meetings, of which there could be a lot.
I understand that completely, and I have fantastic coverage.
Okay, all right. No prejudice here, just preference for children whose parents are available.
Absolutely, and I make time for that, I assure you.
Okay, fine. Other questions? Then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your interest. Mr. Sullivan.
So actually, my question to you is, why doesn't the state give us more money for education?
Hi, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Probably haven't been in this room in about twenty years, so thank you for welcoming me back.
We appreciate your interest.
My name's Tim Sullivan, I was raised and educated in Brookline, I am a graduate of the Pierce School in Brookline High School. I am part of the problem, I moved out of town in the mid-nineties, I moved back in two thousand and nine. I'd like to think, because I was here before, I'm a different part of the problem, but I have two small children at Baker School, and a third that will be there in about three years. I will say, I remain very impressed with the quality of the schools, and the teachers, and administrators in town, but I'm very cognizant of what's going on with enrollment growth, obviously, I've been following the B-Space work, and given my long-term association with the town, and my interest in having the schools remain strong for my children, and the professional experience I bring to the table, I've decided to step up and offer my services for the Override Study Commission, if you're so inclined. I spent the last sixteen years of my career in senior public budget and finance positions in and around state government. In prior jobs, I could have answered the question you asked.
I know you're Mass Housing today, but I thought you might remember something from those days.
Well, I would give Sean an early indication of what the local aid numbers were for Brookline, I can admit now, so I did my best for the town, to the extent that I could. But I've jumped into deep and difficult fiscal and public budgeting issues. I took over as the Director of Finance in the big dig after the blow-up of overruns in the Jim Carrey-Lozera era, and got the first finance plan passed there in two years. So I don't love jumping into the public eye, but I'm certainly used to it, and I've jumped in, and I think been successful in those kinds of instances. I was the state budget director right after nine-eleven, and dealt with the budget crisis that came from that, so I'm aware of difficult choices, and how those need to be made, and how those need to be presented. And for the last ten years, I've been at Mass Housing, mostly as the Chief Financial Officer, really during one of the more difficult financial markets we've seen since the Great Depression. I'm very proud of what we've done at Mass Housing, we just closed our biggest lending year ever, and the year that just closed, one point seven billion dollars, about seventy percent better than we've ever done before. So I think I've a long record of fiscal stewardship in really difficult circumstances and jumping into problems. I would say, in terms of things I'd like to do as part of this commission, I think I bring a collaborative style, which I'm very interested in working, I think it's very important that this committee work well together, because at the end of the day, the committee needs to present credible and transparent recommendations that present a broad consensus for the way forward. I'm very cognizant of the fact that, and this is something I didn't really know until the B-Space discussions, just how few of the households in Brookline have students in the schools. So the plan needs to be very transparent and credible to folks, and I think it needs to bring a lot of integrity in terms of recommendations that are balanced. So be happy to, I have a sense for what some of the questions are, but I'll leave that up to you.
Selectman Binka.
Yeah, there's actually an old joke about people in prison, and somebody stands up and says number one, and everybody roars, and somebody stands up and says number two, and everybody roars with laughter, and there's a visitor to the prison, and he asks, what's going on? He said, well, these guys have heard the joke so often, they know what they're in. So somebody else stands up and says number eight, and there's dead silence. in. So somebody else stands up and says number eight, and there's dead silence. The guy looks over and says, guy never could tell a joke. So, number one. The question, obviously, and I think you may have alluded to this already, are there any particular issues that you might want to carve out that fit your interests?
In my mind, sort of three things, although I would say forecasting and modeling work is something I'm interested in. I've done that in the state level. I think it's really important to this discussion, because I think being able to explain what's going on with revenue and expenses and doing that in a, I'd say, the second thing I'm interested in is in presenting that in ways that are easy to understand and credible to folks. I think it's really important that people can easily kind of consume the information that comes from this, and there's going to be a lot of it. So I think synthesizing all the things that come and trying to help be a part of how you present that is very important. I'd say the third thing I'm interested in is really looking at spending inefficiencies and getting sort of involved in making sure that the spending side, I'd say, town and school, has been looked at sufficiently so that there's a sense that we've scrubbed spending as well as looked at revenue options.
And I'll ask number two. Although I don't really like being number two, but okay. So what biases do you come to Mr. Sullivan?
You know, I wrote this early, because it was the K-8 model. I mean, I, having, I moved to Brookline because I thought the K-8 model was great as a student. And as a parent, it's what I wanted. So to me, I think it's incredibly important. And I know that's not necessarily a decision of this group, but if I get an opportunity to say it, I think the K-8 model is very important. I'd say, second bias I bring is, I'm really impressed with the town and school administration staff. And I don't, I don't think people are suggesting this, but I don't think this is a management problem we're dealing with. I think this, and I think a lot of the solution is going to come not from necessarily the members, but really the members leveraging the knowledge of the town and school staff. And so I've had a chance to work and know some of them, and I come to the table with a bias that I think they're actually quite good. I'd say, the third bias I would say is that, you know, you should not ask people to sort of pay more in taxes without having done what you can to look at the spending side. So I've talked about that, but I think that's really important as part of this overall.
Good. So as a fellow product of the Brookline Public School Systems, I share your bias for the K-8 model, but on the other hand, my mind is open to overcome my bias too, if necessary.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I wonder if you could give us any specifics when you say, look at the spending side too, what you're thinking of?
Well, so when the governor was re-elected, he formed an intersecretary budget team, the ISBIT team, which I chaired. And we brought together a bunch of folks from agencies, and we basically said, like, what can we do? And we created, I thought, a very useful environment where we tried to do this in a way that recommendations were not pinned to any person in particular. They were a recommendation to a study of the group. So because I think one of the things that happens is, people know where there are inefficiencies, but they often don't want to be in a position of having to be the ones to sort of point the finger at their own agency. And so there, what we combed through, you know, and I think this is worth doing, just so people are aware that you've done it. We should look at overtime. You should look at, you know, what staff spends on food. You should look at travel. You should sort of look at line items that I think would look embarrassing if people kind of saw it in the tab and said, wow, why are we spending that and asking us to spend more money? So I think that's something, it's both a fiscal thing and to some degree a political thing, but I think it's important to be done as part of this, because I think you want to have the credibility to say you've looked at all of those things as part of all of your options.
Selectman Wyszynski?
And I'll ask my operational question. What's your schedule look like? Will you have the time to do this?
Yeah, I mean, I consulted with my wife, which was really the thing I needed to do. She's very supportive of, she is following, our trade-off, she's actually been following B-Space more, so I've been sort of with the children while she goes to B-Space meetings. This will be the trade-off in return. So, you know, I'm available. I'm not particularly on other boards or other, you know, volunteer things that are going to pull me away. I have a very, very light travel schedule, so I think that, you know, I'm here because I can make the commitment.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we definitely appreciate your interest. Mr. Bassett? We give you an award for succinctness in your application.
Thank you very much. I'll take questions. I'm John Bassett. Good evening. We moved here, Christina and I moved to our present house in 1975 because of the schools. Soon after that, I started volunteering. I've been a town meeting member since '81. I've been on a lot of boards and commissions. I've been on the advisory committee. I've been on the comprehensive plan commission, open space plan review. So I want to make, I love our town. I want to make, help make things work well and fairly. Having been here for so long, it, the first thought when I began to read about the enrollment increase was that it's cyclical, and it will probably decrease again. I think that's likely to be true, but it also seems likely that we're going to have to spend some money, either as an override or maybe a debt exclusion. If that is the decision that we make, I'd like to see it done fairly, and I'd like to see it, whatever it is, approved by the voters. I would like to help with the political work that's going to be needed. It always is, to do whatever solution comes up or is recommended. It seems also likely, from what I read, that part of the solution may be related to buildings, maybe capital expenditure expense on buildings, adding space. If that happens, I have, I have some background. I'm a retired carpenter builder. I've also spent a lot of time in architecture school. I'm interested in design. I'll answer one of Selectman Goldstein's questions by saying that I have strong feelings about design. I love a good joke, and I like the status center, but I tend to lump them together. I will not be in favor of hiring Frank Gehry to do any design for increasing spaces in Brookline schools. So I'll stop there.
Really gone out on a limb.
I don't think that one was even on the table, John, so I think you're safe there.
Actually, so that Ken doesn't have to ask his question about biases.
Go for it, John. Say it by larynx. Thank you.
I am biased against reusing the old Lincoln School as a ninth elementary school. And I'm very much in favor of having kids be, being able to walk to school of neighborhood schools. Before I was in Brookline, I was in Boston in JP, and my little bunny Sarah was bussed to a school in Grove Hall. Wasn't far, but it took actually about an hour and a half each way, because the bus has to make a lot of stops. It can never be early. Anyway, buses are slow, and she spent almost three hours every day on a school bus. I think it's, it's very positive that kids go to school with the same kids that they play with after school, and that kids, kids can walk to school. So I'll stop there and take questions.
Selectman Baker?
What, as a member of the committee, what particular issue or issues do you think you might want to carve out as this committee breaks into task forces that would fit your interests and your expertise and would be relevant to the work of the committee?
Well, as I said, I'm interested in architectural, in building design. I've experienced as a builder. I've been involved in planning issues, zoning and planning issues, not only in Brookline, but in Jamaica Plain. I was involved in stopping I-95 and coming through Boston. So I've been interested in planning issues all my life.
I'm going to ask anyway, John. You said you had a bias against old Lincoln School. I'm wondering if you have any biases, probably to a stronger word, or any early thoughts about what an acceptable solution might be?
I don't, I, no, I can see the, well, one person on this email thread that we're having about old Lincoln has suggested expanding, not beep, but expanding early education, kindergarten, first, maybe first and second grade, and setting up local centers. I'm probably doing it a disservice by not describing it clearly, but creating additional space for, I don't know, four, five, six, seven-year-olds, and thus freeing up space in the elementary schools. That, I don't know much about pedagogy, but that seems like an idea that might be worth, worth looking at.
Good, thank you.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, so, John, I know your kids are a little bit older now, so what, do you have any sort of current familiarity with the schools and their?
No, well, they, my baby is going to be 42 this summer, so, but my, my daughter, Sarah, who is being bussed, is now a second-grade teacher in Manhattan, and has been a teacher for a long time. So I actually do a lot of talking about, about her teaching first, second, and other grades she works with.
Selectman Wyszynski?
What does your schedule look like?
Well, I'm retired. I do have commitments on Monday and Thursday nights, but I have lots of daytimes available and other nights.
That could be an issue.
Yep.
Availability at night, actually.
It could be an issue.
Yeah. And it's just Monday and Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lowey?
I must say something about the alphabetical order here.
Yeah, well, it got slightly, slightly disorganized.
He added a couple.
Yeah, the latecomers were added at the bottom.
Thank you very much. My name's Werner Lowey. And as you can see from my resume, I've been involved in quite a few different things in Brookline over the years. But the effort that I'm most proud of really is one that I think is most similar to the Override Committee. Perhaps not on the surface, but let me explain. I'm sure you all remember the Webster Street Hotel project in Coolidge, Werner, a number of years ago. Ultimately, it wasn't town money that built that, but just like investing in our schools, that was really about taking a valuable town resource, in that case, a parcel of land, and working with the people of Brookline to determine whether it was better to continue the status quo, or in a sense, to invest in it. There was a lot of controversy over the hotel, obviously. A lot of people didn't want to take action, were afraid to take action, whatever. But what I think good government is about is facing challenges head-on and taking action. We obviously always need to be prudent, but sometimes we also need to push the envelope. I got involved in the Webster Street Hotel, much in the way I would here, I guess. Initially, I was on the sidelines. I wasn't a fan of hotels. I wasn't an advocate of development per se. But two of the people that did the most to make it happen, which were Joe Geller and Amy Schekman, asked me to get involved because they recognized that I had been doing work in traffic calming and neighborhood livability, sustainability generally. And we ultimately got broad public support for that hotel, because even though we started with a, you know, with a big project that was focused on just the hotel, we found ways to address broader issues, to make sure that it contributed to the entire community in the broadest possible way. And I feel that in the same way that the hotel project was clearly centered on the hotel itself, and on whether it could generate revenue for the town, there's no question at all that the center of the task for this committee is, is on the schools and the town budget. But at the same time, just like the hotel process, it seems to me the process here will be enriched if the discussion includes issues of long-term community livability and sustainability, and that to do that, we need people, to include people not just in the school community, but also those who speak for the long-term public good in sort of the broadest sense.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, thank you. You may, you actually, I think, probably have just alluded to this in your last comment, but what issue or issues would you like to carve out if you were a member of this committee that would fit your interests, your expertise, and be relevant to the committee?
Well, perhaps some of the things I've said were a little broad. I would actually be a little narrower than that. I haven't thought about it too much except tonight. But I definitely have an interest in energy efficiency, and it seems to me that that's something where, you know, in a conservative kind of conservation orientation, there may be work to be done, but also in a more proactive, sort of looking for opportunities sense, there may be work to be done, as well as the more general things I talked about.
But no attitude about K through 8 or any of those other?
I was waiting for the question.
I'll ask it. So Werner, what biases do you come with?
Well, while we started going on K through 8, that was the first thing that jumped into my mind, too. I mean, it's amazing how strongly many of us feel that K through 8 is great. So I had to actually think a little bit beyond that. And I realized that I have a bias in favor of this, and I said, this is, it may not really be able to ever play out in this, in this school situation, just because there may not be, probably there's not enough time. But I have a very strong bias towards mixed use, towards, you know, whether you're talking about it in terms of, you know, housing and commercial uses, or whether you're talking about it in terms of mixing generations and cohousing, or public buildings with children and older people and so on. And as I say, I'm not quite sure how that might play out, but I think part of it, I've come to this without a lot of, you know, I think it's good to come to this without specific ideas, but that's a bias that I would look toward.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I think you've sort of, I know you're, you say on your resume that your kids just graduate, your last one graduated in 2007, so you're probably still, still fairly familiar with the schools and the issues. So I think you've kind of answered my question. I will turn it over to Selectman Wyszynski.
And my operational question, what's your schedule look like?
Well, if this, if this had happened three months ago, I wouldn't be here, because right now, I'm very, very busy, as some of you may know, working on solarized Brookline. But I've carved out the time to do that. You know, I'm at a point in my career where I've got a lot of vacation and personal days and things, and I take an hour or two here and there I have to. And that, that solarize is going to be winding down in September. And as I say, right now, I'm putting a lot of energy into that, and I think I can put the same energy into this.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you very much. We do appreciate your interest.
Well, I think as Selectman Baker said, all the candidates are amazingly good.
Incredible.
So it's going to be hard decisions.
I think he might have a committee of 20. Then you can have a few people meeting each day, and not everybody.
Incredible resources, those candidates.
Right, right. We are, we are truly, truly fortunate.
We are, we are blessed, no question.
And now we are going to move from the discussion of school enrollment and how we will house them and pay for them, to an item carried forward from our last Selectments meeting, which is lodging house regulations. Ms. Korea, I believe there were a couple of recommendations for changes that we agreed to. Is that right?
Is that right? And I will confess that I did not read in detail the edited version that's here, and I'm asking for your guidance.
Okay, yeah, there are four proposed changes from the draft that was the subject of the public hearing. The first proposed change is in section three. That just brings the standard of review on applications for lodging house licenses a little closer to the language in the cases that I think is a minor change. I'm just explaining that one. The next proposed change is in section 17. There was a comment at the public hearing that the math didn't make sense on the space requirements.
Right, right.
And so the building department looked at that and made a correction. And so that's what you see in this section. In section 21 on inspections, Pat Maloney of the Health Department revisited that language and proposes what is here, which would carve out the, from the requirement, lodging houses that have long-term occupancy. And in addition, there is a waiver provision in the regulations, so if there were a lodging house that wanted to, thought there was a basis for not having to undergo these inspections at all with this frequency, they could apply to the Health Department.
Selectmen Daley.
Yeah, I appreciate the change there. I think that's what I was asking for. And can I just ask in the table of contents that the section title be changed there as well?
Yes.
It was, it didn't, the new title didn't make it to the table of contents.
Right.
Okay. And then the last change is in section 38, electrical use policy. And this is just some clarifying language. So again, section 38 is on the policy that the lodging houses have to communicate to their occupants. And so the change to language just makes clear all the devices that are prohibited. This includes toaster ovens. And then there's some clarifying language in 38C regarding electrical strips. And then finally, the prohibition on cooking in rooms in section 39 now includes toaster ovens. So that's just some clarifying language.
Does this, does those, those two sections, we just, you know, pass that warrant article that would allow for those special type of lodging houses that do allow cooking in the rest?
Enhanced SROs. That's, section 40 deals with that specifically.
And there aren't any changes from the draft we reviewed at the public hearing.
Okay, so, so is it clear that 38 and 39 don't apply if you're under 40?
Yes, I believe it is. Section 40 is very detailed. Is it included in your draft before you tonight?
I'm just wondering, because 38 says all lodging houses shall establish...
39, yes, 38 is the electrical use policy.
So shouldn't it say all lodging houses except those that come under section 40?
So perhaps in B, it could say...
Before 40, it says notwithstanding the foregoing, licensees may provide car cooking facilities.
Okay.
So I think, I think that's...
All right. That seems, that seems to cover it, yeah. Okay. All right.
Just a quick question. I, I just wanted to be clear as to the intent of the original ban of toaster ovens would seem to be much broader, and I'm wondering whether the fire department and the building department are content with the idea of toaster ovens being used in the common kitchens? Because there was, there were some comments, I think...
It's got to do with wiring.
Well, okay, I, let me...
In other words...
Are toaster ovens okay in common kitchens, and is everybody in agreement on that?
I believe if the common kitchens wiring is up to the fire safety code, then a toaster oven would be allowed there, but most of the individual units would not meet the wiring for fire safety, which is, I think, the trigger for this.
Okay, I, because what I heard just sort of in passing from Mr. Maloney at our last meeting was that there was a particular concern about toaster ovens as opposed to toasters. And I, and this, as I read this now, this would allow toasters and toaster ovens in the common kitchen areas, and it wouldn't allow neither in the individual kitchens.
I think that's what Mr. Maloney intended, yes.
Yeah, the individual kitchens are now in the enhanced SR rooms, and those have the wiring...
Right, I understand.
As do the common kitchens.
And...
And so the distinction was, I think, I think the fire, as I understand it from the discussions as they've evolved, the fire department was concerned about heat generating devices, toasters, toaster ovens, microwaves with convection, all of those were concerned.
It's toaster ovens apparently draw a higher amount of current, and they need a higher rating of the wiring, and that includes the wiring that goes into the socket.
Okay.
And it's those little things that have the little circuit breaker right in there when you plug it in, that you have in your kitchen, but you don't have in other rooms.
Right.
Whatever.
GFI, you know, but...
No, but I, is, everybody is okay with this language. The fire department is okay, building is okay.
That's what I wanted to say. I mean, this was, you know, Mark Jefferson from the fire department and the whole building department. We're in on the committee, talk about this, and I can't recall specific discussion of toaster ovens in common areas, but they certainly had every opportunity to bring it to our attention.
Okay.
Well, and more to the point, what, what is at issue here is that the common kitchens are meant to meet electrical and other code standards that an individual's room will not, and so they're more, a little more permissive, if you want to think about it that way, because they inspect those kitchens.
Okay.
All right? That's what I understood the distinction to be.
The basis for my question is that, as I understood this last week, there was a broadband on toaster ovens. It wasn't really tied to in-room use. Mr. Maloney, I may have misunderstood him, but Mr. Maloney said that there was a particular concern about that, and I wasn't sure whether that concern was limited to individual room use or common kitchen use. But if everybody is fine with this, which allows toaster ovens as well as the other appliances in the common areas, then...
Yes, yeah, Mark Jefferson is on board with this language.
Then I'm comfortable with this. Good, that's, that's what I wanted to pin down.
All right. Are there any other questions about lodging house regulations?
None.
Then...
Thank you, Ms. Correa, for the very...
Diligent.
Diligent and very responsive edits here. Thanks.
Appreciate all of the time that went into this. Then I believe we can take a vote, and then we will vote the fees as the second part. And just to bring this to everyone's attention, the fees are listed on the top sheet 11-1, where the revised regulations in the packet.
Could I, I know this isn't a public hearing. I'm just wondering whether anybody has any comments on the revisions from the public, if we could. Okay, I see some people lingering here, and I just wanted to make sure that there weren't some issues. Good, thank you.
I think one of them's lingering to get a ride home with you.
Yeah. Okay, I would like to go home, and I don't need a ride. I propose that we approve the lodging house regulations as revised and amended dated, this would be the version, let's just say today's date, right?
It's, yeah, it's got a July 2nd date in the header.
With, with the one change I asked for on the table of contents.
Right, with, that's what I'm saying, as amended with the change in the table of contents. I'm sorry, you're saying July 2nd?
It is.
Okay, right, okay.
We're approving the July 2nd, 2013 lodging house regulations as revised and with the change in item number 21 in the index. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. Selectmen Daley. I want to go home.
And Selectmen Banka says aye also.
Selectmen Banka. Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wischinski. And the chair says aye. All right. You don't know how badly I want to go home. The fees are published, and I don't really know that I need to read through all of these. Are there any questions, anybody wants to ask about the schedule of fees? My understanding is that this is pretty straightforward. Okay?
Yep, looks good.
All right. Then I move that we approve the fees as outlined in the schedule dated June 21st, 2013, for fees to be paid to the Selectmen, to the building department, and to the fire department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Well, I think the new, isn't the new, the new schedule is a unified fee?
You're absolutely right. The fee schedule, based on actual costs, which is at the bottom of the page, and that's the only part that we're agreeing to right now, by room, by number of rooms, 1 through 19, 20 through 69, 70 through 124, et cetera. All right? Is everybody following?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of approval of the lodging house license fees? Please say aye. Selectmen Daley, Selectmen Banka, Selectmen Goldstein, Selectmen Wischinski, and the chair votes aye, and I believe that concludes the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 9th.
And we don't meet next week.
And there is no, no Board of Selectmen's meeting next week. We will convene next on July 23rd.